Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to invite the United States of America and the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all.
Please, please remain standing for a moment. Since our last meeting, we lost another dear friend of Madison, a former mayor, former Board of Education member, Len Head. He dedicated many years of volunteer life to Madison, so please, let's recognize him in a moment of silence. Thank you. Minutes for approval. I have a motion for the regular minutes of June 25, 2012.
May I move that?
Second discussion. Seeing none, we'll pull.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lynx? Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrygon?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
All right. Step down here for... Proclamation. Frank, I see Frank, anybody? Frank Iannerone, please step forward. I'd love to have anyone who will help Frank with his award. Someone has to make sure that the people are aware of the great work that Frank has been doing. We're probably sure to kick it up a notch. So proclamation of Borough Madison, whereas Frank Iannerone has been a volunteer with the municipal alliance addressing substance abuse for over two years, and whereas during this time Frank has taken the lead on three county-sponsored public awareness and education campaigns, and whereas the success of these campaigns mainly parents who host lose the most, sticker shock, and the prescription medication drop-off events resulted from excellent teamwork between Frank and Madison Police Department, and whereas Frank has also raised awareness of the Alliance and the business community and increased participation through his contacts in the Chamber of Commerce, and whereas Frank Iannerone, a registered pharmacist, has educated the community as well as residents of Madison, serious housing, and assisted living facilities about the proper use of prescription drugs and the risk of potential drug interactions, and whereas as a member of the Alliance, he has expanded his commitment to the prevention of underage drinking and illegal drug use, and whereas Frank is also a guest speaker and mentor to the pharmacy students at Montpelville University and provides students with internships at his pharmacy, and whereas Frank Iannerone was honored as Morris County Alliance Volunteer of the Year at the recent Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Annual Summit. Now further, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim September 24, 2012, as Frank Iannerone Day, his efforts of dedication and commitment to make Madison a special place to visit, work, live, and everyone to help us through it.
You know Carmel?
Carmel, thank you for your effort to make sure that Frank is not Madison's best kid secret as far as...
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Couple of other announcements. We received a note from the Governor this week that we are recipients of another Green Acres Grant towards the purchase of the MRC, and as I'm trying to find my notes, $325,000, and this is pending funding of the Green Acres Fund, and we are looking forward to putting that towards retiring more debt, so we appreciate the partnership with the state in the purchase of this land. Also, I have an announcement, which we have a, at the end of the meeting, a resolution related to this. I apologize, I have my notes here and I have key dates, but just a few weeks ago, Jerry Mantone took on an extra role here in Madison as Acting Chief to provide leadership to the police department, and after 34 years of dedicated service to the Borough of Madison, Jerry has decided to retire. This retirement will take effect on October 5th. He will stay on through next August on retirement leave, and we will be recognizing Jerry with a more formal ceremony, hopefully at our October 8 meeting, but I want to really thank Jerry for everything he has done, and you know, if anyone knows Jerry, he will not be a stranger. You will see him throughout the town with that smiling face, providing support for all of us, and we congratulate him again for a great career. And during Bob Landrygon's community report, we have a great little story on an award we're receiving, so I'll just leave that, throw that little teaser out there. And for the last part of my comments, I'm going to ask Chief DeRosa to come up here and talk about something very exciting happening in town that everyone will have a chance to be a part of.
Good evening and thank you. I was told to keep it brief, but I don't know if I can do that on this topic. Some of you may already have known or are aware that we've been chasing our antique fire truck, a piece of Madison's history, for a very long time, and we've actually come across it. So I'm here tonight to explain a little bit of the story and get you to understand how we came about this and what it means not only to the Fire Department but to the town of Madison. This is not a Madison Fire Department project. This is a project that started through us, but we've taken on many private citizens that are working for this. It's a piece of Madison's history that just happens to be a fire truck. And I'm on, I head the committee along with Joe Longo, Bruce Goodwin, Carmen Toto, and Frank Forte, or John Forte, excuse me. And we had that committee, and we've been meeting, I don't know, quite regularly since June to go on. So anyway, this is a quick story of our antique fire truck. How this all started, we've been looking for this, Joe was chasing this, Joe Longo, for a while, and he came up cold back in the end of last year, and we thought it was a lost cause. The last contact we had with the truck we were looking for was when we heard it was in Las Vegas in a museum, and we heard it went to Ponderosa Ranch, and then we couldn't find it anymore. So we were at, we didn't know what else to do, so when one day walks into the firehouse a gentleman by name of Pete Eisen, who's a Chatham resident, former history teacher of Joe's when he was in Harding, and he's also a fire truck nut. My words, not his. A real nice guy, but he's a savant when it comes to fire trucks. He just rattles them off where they went, who's got them, where they go, what they do, no, it's it. So this fire truck on the top over here, this 1931 Aaron's Fox, was Madison's hook-and-ladder truck back in the day. And he brought in to show us the picture on the bottom of what it looks like today after somebody cut it up and restored it to that, which isn't kind of nice, but it was the best that they could do. And he was just showing it to us, and Joe happened to mention to him, Longo, that we were looking for our Aaron's Fox. You think you got any ideas? And he says, "I know a few people, let me make a couple phone calls." And inside of, I don't know, three, four weeks, he found it, our Aaron's Fox, right there, our 1921 Aaron's Fox, who has been on an amazing journey in the United States. He not only found it, he made contact, or he came up with a name, a phone number, and he found out the truck was still available. It was available and on the market to be sold. It was in a private collector's hands in Ware, Massachusetts. Now, this truck here, it all started back in, on July 22, 1920, around 6 o'clock in the afternoon, a mean lightning storm came through, and Mrs. Geraldine Rockefeller's Dodge's estate, her, one of her barns got struck by lightning. The ensuing fire killed one of her favorite horses along with a couple other horses. Well, it was determined at that time that Madison didn't have the capacity to pump enough water fast enough to put out her fire. So what she did and what she decided to do, not only for her but for the town of Madison, was buy a fire truck, which is an incredible thing unto itself. So she set out to buy a fire truck. The roll call sheet you see there was the original roll call from that that we found in our archives, in, you know, boxes of stuff that we saved over the years. So as, again, as a result of that fire, she went out and bought a fire truck. Now, this fire was in July of 1920, July 22, to be exact. The fire truck she purchased was delivered on May 4. Now, normal build time in that day, we found out, was 18 to 24 months. This thing happened in about eight months. She paid $18,000 for a truck in 1921. Average cost then for a fire apparatus was maybe $5,000 to $7,000. A Model A was going for $800, you know, at the time. So she bought the best of the best. Mrs. Dodge was a friend and an ally of the Fire Department over the years, too, you know. It's well-known she loved animals, but we can argue that, you know, her second love was the Madison Fire Department. This is her and Mr. and Mrs. Dodge on the left. This was one of our mascots from years ago, Smokey, and that's Mrs. Dodge with the former Chief of Department at Danaher when we were giving her an honorary membership badge, which we do still have in our possession. The truck that she purchased, the Aaron's Fox, it was considered the Rolls-Royce of fire trucks in its day. This is not the truck, but this is one that's exactly like, it just happens to be white. The distinguishing feature of this truck is the chrome dome on the front, which was like a expansion chamber for the pump because it was a piston pump. The Model P4 that she purchased for it, there was only 23 Model P4s made. Of the 23, or of the Model Ps, of the 23, only nine were P4s, and you could see where they all went. Most of them were in Passaic, where the garment district, where there was a lot of money, a lot of industry over there that could afford them, and Madison. Of that Model P4 series, there's only, we thought two, now we found out there's three left in the world, one of them is ours. That model, this picture here is of former Chief of Department Samuel Grover, also former mayor of Madison as well. This was taken at the Central Avenue Fire Station, right inside the bay doors when it was first delivered. It's got its original wooden wheels and solid rubber tires on it when it was first delivered. On May 14, and we found this out through going back, Joe and I went to the basement of the old Madison Eagle and dug through the old papers, and we found the newspapers before and after the event. On May 14, they had a huge parade in Madison. It was attended, according to Madison Eagle, over 10,000 people were here. They had a parade that started on Central Avenue and went all the way around, back on the Waverly Place, past a reviewing stand. You could see the visiting fire chiefs from as far away as New York City, all the big cities, Passaic, Newark, Patterson, were there to honor this big event, and there was many other dignitaries, mayors, speeches given. The newspaper said it was a bigger event than when they dedicated James Park. I wasn't around for that either, so I got nothing to equate it to. But it was this grand parade, it was a dinner at the fire station that evening, it was a huge, huge event, because she donated a fire truck. I don't know how many people you know that donated a fire truck to anybody, but not only did she donate, donate one to Madison, she donated a total of three to Madison in her history. She donated two MACs later on to help provide protection to the citizens in the town. One of the distinctive things that was done to this truck, too, was a plaque, and this plaque was sitting on a, attached to a bell in the fire station. We've rung it for meetings for years. That chrome plaque you see up there presented to the Fire Department in the Borough of Madison. Every other Aaron's Fox ever made, that same plaque just said, "Aaron's Fox," with a serial number and a patent date on it, except the one that Mrs. Dodge bought, because she wanted to say what she wanted to, and that's it. So we have it, and it's going to go back on once we purchase it. This is a picture of a, of a fire where it was at on Waverly Place when it was pumping in its day, but the Aaron's Fox served the Rose City for over 40 years, and it finally had its major, you know, failure of parts when, at the St. Vincent's Fire, I don't know if you remember that, back in the 50s when the steeple caught fire, and it burned when they were in there having a, there was actually a mass going on, and they had to get the kids out and whatnot, but it burned, it was out of service for about 20 minutes, so they were able to get it back running again. It was deemed unreliable at the time, it was placed in reserve, and eventually in 1960, a new MAC pumper was purchased and then the truck was sold, and that's when it started its own journey. It went on to Ashley, Pennsylvania. Rumor has it, they thought it blew the motor when they were trying to drive it over Schoolies Mountain, it turned out they just overheated it, and then they ended up getting towed the rest of the way. Ashley, Pennsylvania held on to it for about three or four years, and then they sold it to a museum in Nevada, set in Harris Museum, and then it was sold to a private, or a collection, another collection agency, and then it went on to the Ponderosa Ranch, and then it was purchased by a gentleman in Ware, Massachusetts in 1981. And that's where it's been ever since, up in Ware, Massachusetts, sitting in a, private collector's, in a realm with, accompanied by 149, 150 other motorcycles, antique cars, and whatnot. In beautiful, pristine shape. So on July 22, 2012, a group of us, and my eight-year-old, or seven-year-old son back there, took a ride up to Ware, Massachusetts on a Sunday afternoon, and we went up there, unbeknownst to us, on July 22. 92 days to the day her barn got struck by lightning. Now, talk about fate, and if you believe in all this stuff, with the stars lining up, I don't, but I'm starting to after dealing with this. Again, the roll call from that, July 22, 1920, so 92 years to the date, we go up and visit this truck. And this truck ran, it started, it's a gorgeous, gorgeous shape, for 92 years old, God, I hope I look that old. That's it, right there, when we took a picture when we drove it up into the parking lot.
You won't look that good when you're 92.
I used to like it. And here's a picture of me and my son Joshua when we went up there. Interesting enough, when we left, because we spent about four hours with the truck and getting to know the guy, get him to understand who we are and that we were very serious in bringing the truck home. The present owner was, is just overly concerned about where the truck was going to go, he likes to see him end up from where they started, but how it's going to be cared for, he didn't want it in a pole barn in someone's backyard or under a tarp, under a tent, and we had to assure him, you know, three ways from Sunday, how this truck was going to be taken care of and respected, because it was part of our history but part of Madison's history that, you know, something that Mrs. Dodge had given to us. Mrs. Dodge's son Hartley, who this building was built in his honor, in his memory, rode in this fire truck in the parade when it was delivered, because it was documented in the Madison Eagle that he played a key role. He was 12 years old at the time, and how, what a big thrill for him as it was for my son, as my son said to me as we were leaving, you know, "Dad, how come we're not taking the truck home with us?" "Well, we've got some stuff to work out over there," so. To that end, with him, not that I'm going to go on, but in our house, we have a little whiteboard, and he writes his Christmas list on it. I looked at it this morning, there was a number written down, $150,000, and I said to him, "Joshua, what's this?" Because I'm asking Santa Claus for the money for the truck. So, as cute as the story is, that's what we're going for, and that's what the truck is going for. What is the fair market value of this truck? In July of this year, a truck, the 1925 Aaron's Fox Model NS4, very similar to ours, but the Model Ns are almost like the plain Janes, they're smaller motors, smaller pumps, it went for $198,000 at auction. And our old ladder truck, which was chopped and turned into like a, I don't know, like a riding vehicle, went for $93,000. So we just had ours appraised, and it went, it was appraised between 140 and 160, so 150 is pretty much right in the ballpark as fair market value. And that's it, right over there. So I'm here to just tell you about this, that we're kicking off our campaign, we're waiting to get our 501(c)(3) designation established, we're probably a couple days away from that, huh Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm ready to go.
Ray's helping us out with that, getting that going. And then once, once that's started, we've got, we'll have a website set up for donations. We're going to be doing fundraisings, everything from pancake breakfast to, who knows, sky's the limit. And I encourage anybody from the public that has any ideas or wants to make a donation towards it, that's great, but any ideas for fundraisers or thoughts on how we can do it. The owner of the truck was nice enough and kind enough to loan slash lease us the truck for one year. So we have this truck sitting in our fire station now. He allowed us to take the name Ashley off and put Madison on it. So there's a letter there now. We picked it up Friday, we went up Friday with a caravan, a couple cars, and we had a tractor trailer that transports antique vehicles, and drove it back from Ware, Massachusetts and got here about 4:30 Friday afternoon. He's taken the, we took the letters off over the weekend, and the new ones are going on right now, so it'll say Madison as it rightfully should when we get it. But it's in beautiful shape, I welcome anybody to stop by and see it, we're proud to show it, it's a part of Madison's history. Mrs. Dodge was so instrumental in helping to protect the citizens of Madison by giving us the tools to work with. Like I said, she wanted us three fire trucks in the course of her life, gave us this building, gave us the train station across the street, and there's many people that don't know that. I mean, I've run into newer residents that, you know, "Who's Mrs. Dodge?" And you start explaining about the Dodge Foundation, and when you watch Channel 13, that little trailer at the end, this is recommended through a donation of the Dodge Foundation, well, that's, that's our Mrs. Dodge as referred to it. We also want to use this as a teaching tool for fire prevention and to carry on the legacy of Mrs. Dodge, to make people really aware, the kids, so they can continue to understand who she was and what she meant to this town. Because she adopted Madison, everything I've read about her and learned about her over the years, she really genuinely cared about what we did and how we did it, she just wanted to make life better for Madison, so. That's my spiel, I hope I didn't go on too long.
Chief did a great job. Any questions from the, comments from the council? So it'll be plenty of opportunity for the residents to help, help give Geraldine a permanent home, and just as a, you know, this was a great story, and every time you come to a council meeting, you never know when you might see a great story like this, so if you're planning to come to the next one, I said October 8. October 8 is Columbus Day, our next meeting is October 10, so please correct your calendars. But again, Chief...
This truck will also be on display on Bottle Hill Day, too, and we're going to be selling T-shirts at that day to start recouping and generating some funds, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Reports from committees, Public Safety, Ms. Tsukamoto.
Yes, thank you. A report from the Police Department, a new surveillance system and a call box have been installed at the Madison Recreation Complex to increase safety and security. We appreciated the teamwork of the Police, Fire, Electric, Building, and DPW Departments to complete this very important project. The Madison Police Department received 1,551 calls for service, responded to 60 medical calls, 24 motor vehicle accidents, and made 14 arrests this month so far. I would like to remind residents to drop off all unwanted prescription drugs for proper disposal this Saturday, September 29, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the lobby of the Police Headquarters on Kings Row. We would like to congratulate Officer Chad Ricker for being recognized by the New Jersey Division of Highway Safety for making the most DWI arrests in our Police Department. Safety improvement efforts at Torrey J. have been well-received, and we are making good progress with the improvements at the junior school. These are items currently being discussed and worked on by the Complete Streets Committee. Additional lighting will soon be installed at Parking Lot Number One to improve safety for our commuters. The committee is also working with the Sustainable Madison Committee and Trends Option on the Safe Route to School Project, and we will schedule a presentation on this project at a future council meeting. I believe October 3, Lisa, is that October?
Yes.
October 2 is the Walk to School Day.
No, that's October.
Unless you're a slow walker.
Okay, October 3 is the Walk to School Day for the Madison School.
No.
This week?
Uh-oh. It's International Walk to School Day, but Madison has a permanent schedule.
I see, okay. And we will hear, and we will hear about that. Okay. To be scheduled. Also, a report from the Madison Housing Authority. The Affordable Housing Project in the Orchard Section is well underway. Madison Housing Authority began the environmental cleanup work on Strickland Place. They found more contaminants than originally expected and will need to pay over $40,000 more for the cleanup. The Housing Authority expects that the cleanup be completed in mid-October. Morris Habitat is scheduled to finish the foundations before the end of the year and hopes to complete the three single-family affordable unit before the end of 2013. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Both the Water and Electric Utility continue to do their maintenance throughout their system to prepare ourselves for the, for our winter months that are coming up. So they are doing a fantastic job in taking care of the lines and any kind of water problems that we may be experiencing. At our recent meeting of the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting, we discussed the asset management program of the, of the utility. The Finance Committee will be getting together to discuss the priority risk of what projects will be on a high priority risk, not only for 2013, but also for 2014 as well, and they will be discussing where the monies may be available. And the, on the Planning Board side, the LED ordinance that we were discussing last time has been pushed over to our next meeting, which is Tuesday, October the 2nd, in which case the ensuing discussion was about the Walgreens proposal, lighting of the building on a corner of Greenwood and Main Street. That also has been carried over to our next meeting, which is Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Lynx.
Since the last meeting, the Engineering Department reports that a municipal aid application for funding a portion of the construction of Green Avenue with Lend to Sean Pike has been submitted to the New Jersey State Department of Transportation. Public Service Electric and Gas Company continues work on the main street gas main replacement. The work is being completed, and I do to traffic concerns. It is hoped work in the Central Business District will be completed in September. The consulting firm of CN, the associates, has submitted a final report on the Candlewood, Tredwell, and West End Palm Stations. Significant improvements will be implemented over the next year with the capital appropriations put in place by the Borough of Madison with the assistance of this consultant, staff in Public Works, Siree Department. Work at the Madison Recreation Complex is progressing with the Department of Public Works completing concrete sidewalks, topsoil, and seed. The Madison Environmental Commission will be assisting with the improvement of the rain gardens this week, and the site will be ready for final paving in approximately two weeks. The Department of Public Works reports that LEAP pickup will start on October 22, 2012. The grading at the MRC is complete. Seating will be complete this week, and work on the irrigation there will begin on Monday, September 24, 2012.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just to, I just wanted to highlight again what Councilman Esposito said regarding the Finance Committee for the joint meeting. We will be paying very close attention to that as it is a substantial amount of money we're talking about. I would also like to give a brief update for residents on the fundraising for the MRC that's currently being done by the MAF. First of all, just, I'd like to make everyone aware that the fundraising deck, or a generic copy of the presentation we are using, is available on the Borough website currently. So if anyone would like to get an idea of some of the things we're looking to, some of the ideas we're using for fundraising, some of the sponsorship opportunities, please refer to the, to the website or, or call us. As it pertains to monies that we've raised this year, we've raised roughly $80,000 on the 50/50 raffle, which will be an annual event. the 50/50 raffle, which will be an annual event. User fees for rec sports have come to about $60,000. Again, these are user fees only for rec sports. Any user fees for school sports are not part of this money. Those are, that's a board of ed, those are board of ed fees, and they use them for their expenses. We had rentals over the summer. For the first year, we were in business of about $20,000. You'll see in the fundraising deck, and you will be getting, a lot of residents, pretty much every resident, will be getting a fundraising letter soon. We are planning to build a donor wall, which we've discussed in the past, and so far, we have sold about $21,000 or six plaques for that, for that wall. If fully sold out, that wall could generate in excess of $600,000. And again, we've only been selling for a couple of weeks. We have sold roughly 10, pardon me, six signs at $1,500 a sign for nine or 10, total of $9,000 or $10,000. If anyone has a business, or if anyone would like to advertise at all, you can call us. We will give you a sign application. They are good for one year, $1,500 for the sign. I believe we have two up. We've sent four more to the printers, and we're expecting more. We've had various donations from individuals to the tune of about $5,000 for a total this year of approximately $196,000. We are also in negotiations with several large corporate entities on major sponsorships. We have been asked by the people we're negotiating with to keep their names private until a decision is made. But we are hopeful that we will be able to secure at least one major sponsorship, if not more, by the end of October. By the end, so by the end of the, hopefully by the end of the year at the latest. Some of the plans that we are, that we have is, you know, the raffle will be annual. We are going to be hosting a spring gala, which people will be able to attend should they so wish. And we want to invite anyone who's interested in helping to join us at our next meeting, which will be not this Saturday, but the following Saturday at 8:30 in the morning. Although if that conflicts with Bottle Hill, we may move it, you know, to the, to the, to the Sunday. We're meeting every two weeks, and we have a, you know, a good group of dedicated volunteers who are out there, you know, pounding the streets every day to look for fundraising opportunities. Thank you very much.
And also as a reminder to everyone, next Monday, October 1st, we're having another town meeting on the, and this one will be on capital spending, the priorities and funding, and hopefully answer all the questions you have. And it is a give and take, so you'll be able to share your feedback on that. Community Affairs, Mr. Landry.
Okay, just a few housekeeping items and then get to what the mayor alluded to before. Critchley &amp; Odell, it's a CPA firm, has opened a space at 333 Main Street. They moved there from 15 Green Village Road. And Jane's Nails has moved across the street from Whole Foods to its new site at 233 Main Street. The Friends of the Madison Senior Center are planning and funding the senior center's participation at Bottle Hill Day. Look for opportunities and mailers that they're sending out to help them raise the funds for the senior center. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts is holding its annual gala where they honor an organization. This year, they're honoring the Madison Rotary, and that's going to be on November 2nd. Okay. Now, just a reminder, Bottle Hill Day is Saturday, October 6th. There will be four stages of music compliments of Maccah and free rock climbing compliments of Blue Ridge Mountain Sports. Now, this next event, I want everybody to watch. It's called the Mad Dash, and the mayor is going to race the mascots to promote the Mad Shuttle. At high noon, Mayor Conley will race mascots down Main Street from the museum clock. All three university mascots are participating, including the Drew Ranger Bear, the FDU Devil, and the Screaming Eagle from the College of St. Elizabeth. I'll be there with my camera for that one. Should be quite interesting. All righty. And now finally, what the mayor alluded to before. We all know Madison is a great place to live. The American Planning Association, the New Jersey chapter, each year identifies great places in New Jersey. This year, they recognize downtown Madison as a great place in New Jersey for 2012. And I'm just going to very briefly read what, a portion of their release. It says, "Downtown Madison Center encompassing Waverly and Lincoln Place has been named a great place in New Jersey by the American Planning Association New Jersey chapter. The success of Waverly and Lincoln Places offers valuable insights for local officials and residents looking to revitalize their communities. Since 1980, the Borough of Madison has consistently applied the planning standards and tools necessary to create a vibrant downtown economy. Waverly and Lincoln Places are designed to balance the competing needs of motor vehicle drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians, all drawn by the bustling stores, restaurants, and entertainment. Madison relies on the Downtown Development Committee, DDC, to take the lead in marketing and maintaining our downtown," says Mayor Conley. The DDC's public-private partnership guarantees a hearty debate of the issues and channels, and channels the spirit of the community into the flourishing hub of bustling commercial storefronts, entertainment venues, and restaurants with upper-level residences." So that is truly a great accomplishment for Madison. And all those who took part in applying for this should be commended.
Should all be very proud of that.
Yes. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start off with something that came out of our housing meeting a couple of months ago. While we were sitting there, Ed Nun, who is captain of the Fire Department, talked about, you know, the possibility of keeping everybody very, very safe in this town. So as most of you know, I'm a local Realtor, and so I, we decided to put our heads together, and we sent out a very nice letter to all the local Realtors. And we are going to have on October 1st, at the Public Safety Building, the Fire Department portion of it, a discussion on how to work efficiently with the Borough of Madison when renting a property in Madison. We probably have about 25 Realtors that are going to be showing up between Madison and Chatham. So we're, we're very excited about this. It's something that we see in housing on a steady basis, that there are properties that are not properly maintained with smoke detectors and whatever is needed. So I'm very proud of the community of Realtors that have decided to come in, and these are probably the ones that always do the right thing anyway. But, you know, we're getting there. So I'm excited about that. And Captain Nun will lead off. We have Fran Boardman coming that's going to talk about some zoning issues as well. So I think it's going to be a highly profitable day for most of the Realtors. And now from the Health Department. The Board of Health, at their last meeting, passed a resolution to hire a new health officer. Her name is Lisa Gola, and she's from, she was recently employed by the Township of Edison. Lisa started today, and I guess she started her day off with, with meeting all of the department heads and whatever. But she'll be assuming the duties of the health officer as well as the housing officer. And Lisa brings a lot of experience in both of those departments. So we look forward to having her work with, with the Borough of Madison, and also that wonderful staff of people at the Health Department. I think that she's going to really enjoy working with those people. And I want, even though Phil is not, does not live around here or whatever, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Phil Murlock, who stepped in as our interim health officer for the past few months. Phil just maintained the department for the past few months, made all the services, made sure that all the services were supplied to the resident in Madison, as well as our current contract towns. And we appreciate the fact that he came out of retirement to help us in that, in this transitional time. He was a joy to work with, and our people at the Health Department really liked him, and he did some good work for us in just a few months. Also, we, we take little journeys, a group of us, from the Borough. And so we've been on the road. And what we do is we go out and we speak to municipalities who might consider contracting with Madison for health services. We recently presented in the Township of Springfield, and I'm optimistic that we will be successful in obtaining the contract. We brought our, one of our nurses with us, John Hoover, who is the board president, myself, Ray Cody, the mayor. So there's a full contingent of us. And I, I think that Jim Burnett did a wonderful presentation, so I'm very, very optimistic that maybe we're going to help, we're going to get this contract. This conversation with Springfield is very important, since all of our current contracts are up for renewal on December 31st. We have, currently have renewal confirmation from two out of the five towns we now service. So in the next few months, we will continue the same process. We will go out, and we will continue to meet with other towns and see if we can offer, you know, the wonderful health services that we enjoy here in Madison. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to do one minor change on the agenda, just to take the first discussion item, which is the JCPenel Communication Improvements, and then we'll go to the invitation for discussion, because that will allow anyone in the audience that wants to ask questions of JCPenel to, before we send them on their way. But as many of us know, 11 months ago, we were getting ready for Halloween, and little did we know that we would see a curveball. And so everyone has learned from that. And we, tonight, we have Stan Prater and Mike Obrensky from JCPenel to bring us up to date on communication methods.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us, having us in tonight. We were here, I guess, at the beginning of your term, Mayor. We might have called you Bob, since I know you so well.
Yep.
And we met with Ray, and I think he was the Assistant Business Administrator, Mayor Holden at that time. We were doing transition, and we were talking about some of the things that we did well, some things we did bad. And communications was one of the things that Mayor Holden had mentioned to us that was very frustrating during that time of the October snowstorm. And you, you as residents and council members and the public, you lived at, you know, being out of power for several days. And so one thing that we were committed to is to give you better communication channels. So my job as area manager, I am your municipal representative. And I am the liaison between Jersey Central and Madison and your municipal officials. So if you have a problem with your electricity, anything here as far as Jersey Central is concerned, I want you to call me directly. And I want you to call the 1-800 number, because I know Mayor Holden was calling the number, and they have you down as one customer. Well, you buy bulk electricity from us, so that's why they ensure you're one customer. You've got over 8,000 residents here in Madison or more. And so when Mayor Holden was asking questions, you know, about, you know, she's only saying one customer, you gotta be kidding me, you know. So we, we want you to not call the 1-800 number, but use us as the initial point of contact. So I'm here to say that, that, that I am your contact. The other thing is, for other towns, we've been going around at different council meetings and, and talking about communication improvements. And it's a little different for this town, because you're being served bulk electricity from our trainer substation over in Summit. And it's, you're, you have two circuit fees or transmission fees that come in, and then you do the meter reading, you do all the service and everything else. So it's a little different. But we have enhanced communications. We've enhanced our website. If you go to the website, it's called a 24/7 Power Center. You can go online and see all the other towns besides Madison, how many outages you have per town. We're giving out information as to ETRs, where to get ice and water if you're out of power for longer than 24 hours. We've also upgraded and invested into our electricity system, our bulk electricity system. We've invested over $200 million in improvements. We're doing aggressive tree trimming and on the distribution circuits as well as transmission. And we've also putting in computer terminals into our live vehicles. So you get real-time data, more, more efficiencies, and we're able to, be able to see where trucks are and send them to trouble spots relative to some of the trouble in the area. So those are the things that other towns are seen to benefit from. The other thing that was beneficial is we had a daily mayor's call that Mayor Holden was not privy to because there was a, a misstep in communication. When we have a major storm outage like we had with Irene or the October snowstorm, we started this during the October snowstorm, when we had a 4 o'clock call with the mayors. And the mayors would give us their local issues, major roads they needed open, if there was any major facilities, elderly care, or anything like that, that was, that needed to be brought back up. We put that on a hot list, and we dealt with those things first. But again, Madison is a little different. You guys are on transmission, transmission lines, two major transmission lines. They give our, in our restoration process, prioritization is based on, first of all, substations, because they feed out to the communities. Those are the first things we want to get up. Transmission, distribution, so you guys are at the top of that list. And then we go into hospitals, 911 centers, and, and we go down to, to 911 centers and emergency responders, fire police. And then we go into the largest groups of outages and so forth, down to the single no light. So this town is given priority. But in terms of communication, I'm going to leave you my personal business card tonight. Bob, I know you have my information, but I want to leave you some for council. I've dealt with Ray and also people over in your electric department on individual things that we've been doing. But I just wanted to reassure you that we haven't lost sight of Madison, because you, you know, you're a bulk customer. We really want to make sure that we have good, open dialogue and open communication. Now, one thing is going to change, and that's why Mike is with me. In about next month or two, Mike is going to be your new representative for, for Madison Borough. Up until that time, I am that representative, and there'll be an official notification. There'll be a letter. I'll have conversations with you, Mayor, about that, when that transition will actually take, take place. So I wanted to have Mike come in, introduce himself, and, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we make a smooth transition when we do switch from Mike to me. And then also wanted to open it up to, to council and the public for any questions that you may have.
Mike? Mike, and I take, Mike's going to become a part of Leadership Morris eventually, Stan?
2004 graduate, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, oh, right, very, okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it is truly a pleasure to be here. I've been with Jersey Central for 26 years this week, actually. I've been an area manager for four years now, covering mostly Sussex, Passaic, and northern Morris counties. As a result of the change, I feel like I'm coming home. I grew up in Plourne Park, spent summer camps at the Y here in Madison, my stomping grounds as a kid. Now live in Randolph for the last 20 years or so, and I've had the pleasure of serving on the town council there for the last eight years. So I understand what it's like to sit in your seat. And I'm looking forward to transition as we move forward. And as I mentioned, a graduate of Leadership Morris, 2004. I do see a Lead New Jersey mug in the, in the audience. I'm currently enrolled in Leadership New Jersey this year. So been out there quite a bit, and I'm looking forward to taking on Madison as one of my towns as we make the transition. Thank you for your time tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments from the council? Jeanie?
Yeah. You had mentioned in your presentation that certain measures and improvements have been done after our experience last year to many of the towns and the surrounding areas. Now, anything specific that you have done with respect to those two specific transmission lines that feeds into Madison to minimize the risk of those two lines being down again in the future during a storm?
Well, what we did specifically there, because they were caused by trees, those trees in those areas that presented a hazard have been trimmed or removed, and we'll continue to monitor those lines for, for hazards. We, and that's a very good question. We're on a four- We're on a four-year trim cycle. And the last time that corridor, that transmission corridor was trimmed was in 2010. So it's scheduled to be fully trimmed in 2014. But since the storm, we have removed trees and some trees just came down, they removed themselves. And then we looked at what we call danger areas or hazard, hazard spots and did some additional trimming. So that's specifically what we did. And it was unfortunate because the second line, had it been one line, you wouldn't have had a problem because we would provide you that redundancy. But we had two lines go down, as you know, and that's where the problem caused, presented itself. So, good question.
Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you. In addition to serving on council, I'm the emergency management coordinator for the town. And I could visualize those two lines laying right by the train tracks that day. On October 12th, we're going to be having a local emergency planning committee meeting. All the different department heads will be there. It's at 8:30 at the Public Safety Building, the police headquarters. Would one of you be available to attend?
Yes.
Plus, what we do is we plan for events such as that.
That's a Friday, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, it is.
8:30?
Uh huh, right at the police station.
Police station, yeah.
Yep.
Me, one of us will definitely be there.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, Stan and Mike, thank you. If you want to just stay for a few minutes in case there's any questions from the audience and then you can go ahead and slip out.
Sure.
At this point, I will open the meeting for our first of two invitations for discussion. Remember, this is the one that has restrictions, so you can come up and ask questions about the JCPN L presentation or other agenda discussions, which include best practices worksheet, the appropriation of $40,000 from General Capital for the Police Department Mobile Vision, amendment for chapter 139, peddling and soliciting. We have removed lightning detection system that will come back at a later date. We have a contract award for the senior bus, open space funding request for Coal Fountain and Rain Gardens, and also appropriation of $25,000 for signal improvements. And also you may comment on or ask questions on any of the resolutions, but ordinances, we have our separate hearing, so please hold until that time comes. And again, as a reminder, later in the meeting, we have our second comment period, you can comment on anything. So with that in mind, if you want to ask questions in those areas or comment, please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, and please hold your comments to three minutes or less. Is anyone in the audience wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Sercio, Park Avenue, Madison. As far as the ordinance, I have to...
So we have hearings on the ordinances, so that when we have a hearing, you can comment or ask questions on that.
All right, just under one resolution, the last one, resolution 235. You know, a couple of meetings ago, I made a suggestion that I think the town of Madison could save some money if we sort of do things together in a group. In other words, I know we got, what, four pump stations and they're all needing some help. My suggestion, and it was a couple of meetings ago, that we should get a good consultant, which you do have a good consultant, that CME is very good. Why don't we put all, all the pump stations in one consulting firm? You get a better price instead of going out one at a time. And then also, when you get a total price, you'll get a better price from a contractor. You get a bigger contractor and you got one contractor to do all four, you know, to come up with one at a time, I think it'd be better. Again, I use the analogy, if, as a contractor, if I was going to do your front steps, side steps, and back steps, if you want a price at a time, I'd say, all right, $3,000 for the front, $3,000 for the side, $3,000 for the back, but if you let me do all three of them, I can do it for $7,000. You know, in other words, and again, you'll get the bigger contractors if you do it with my suggestion. That's all I'm suggesting. Do you talk about these suggestions when we do give suggestions at the meetings? Does it make sense what I just said?
It certainly does. There is savings in quantity when they are, especially if they're already staged in an area to complete projects, they don't have to come back and re-stage and so on.
Again, you get rid of the small contractors, that, like the situation on North Street Pump Station. There was a guy had no, you know, but when you do a bigger job, you get the bigger guys and they got, they got better equipment, they're more professional, they got, you know. So, you know, these suggestions are really, you should talk about them and think about it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? James?
James Sullivan, 25 Broadway Avenue. I have two questions. One is, I'm curious exactly what the Police Department's mobile vision system is. And two, if I recall, for the bus for the senior citizen center, didn't we have some sort of capital campaign raising that? How much does it offset the total cost that we are approving to Wolfgang Body?
We have a 50% grant on that.
Okay, 'cause I was hearing something.
And then we'll cover, during our discussion, where you'll get the answer on the mobile vision system. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And Stan and Mike, thank you very much for coming to visit. And we'll see. Yeah, good to see you. Okay, that's number two on the agenda, is best practices worksheet. Robert's here. And this is related to resolution 229.
This is the second year that the Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services, has required all municipalities and counties to prepare the best practices checklist. This is the first year that we are required to discuss this in an open public meeting with the governing body. The checklist has changed dramatically. There are 29 or 30 new inquiries. They cover the sectors of financial standards, budget preparation and presentation, health insurance, personnel, and public safety. I discussed this at length with Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett. We believe that we will answer yes to 42, not applicable 3, prospective 3, and no 2. The two noes are, as I said in my memo, question number 15, which deals with audit findings. We have had a repeat audit finding, which is the separation of treasury duties, which, according to our auditors, all of their clients do not meet this. This would require us to bring on another employee, which we're not going to entertain that. So we're going to see that repeat finding next year. And then lastly, number 48, deals with collective bargaining agreements and the, we do have longevity awards in our contracts and we must honor them.
And as you point out, with the number of noes, we are well in the range that we will receive 100% of our state aid.
That is correct.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Thank you, Robert?
Yes.
So we have that resolution listed. Appropriation of $40,000 for general capital improvements for upgrades to the Police Department Mobile Vision System, which will include a definition of what that is. Jeanie?
Well, okay, you can supplement what I have to say. Basically, this is the camera system that we have in our patrol vehicles. This was a line item requested at our budget discussion earlier in the year. I see this as not a nice-to-have, but a must-have item. It is very important for the safety of our officers and it's important for us to have very successful prosecution. And also, it reduces our legal exposure. So I recommend that we appropriate the money and go ahead with the purchase. Ray, you have anything else to add?
Excellent summary.
Great. Any questions? Again, this ordinance 30 is...
I think Doc has a question.
I'm sorry, Doc.
Are these replacements of the equipment that's already in the cars?
Currently, we have issues with what we have, yes. Absolutely.
They need to be upgraded?
Yes. This is an upgrade. This is another way that you will probably hear from the Police Department, this is really their lifeline. And we want to make sure that we have this maintained and upgraded.
Understood.
Okay. And that's listed for introduction. Next one, amendment to chapter 139, peddling and soliciting. And this ordinance is also prepared for introduction. Bob?
Sure. Okay. Jim's going to hand out a copy of the ordinance. Effectively, what this ordinance does is it manages the number of licenses that can be handed out or applied for by mobile food vendors in town. Example being the hot dog vendor by Chase Bank and recently, the vendor that opened up behind Esposito's Market. Now, what we're looking to do, this, first of all, this ordinance has been in place since 1990. And what really gave rise to this was the fact that that vendor behind Esposito's opened up on private property. So that kind of made us think, well, we have to go back and look at this because our goal is, we have two goals with this. One is to just better manage the process. You know, do we really want these vendors just going to, let's say, a private business that may be vacant and say, I'm going to open up a vendor on your property, I'm going to open up a food stand on your property? And secondly, we want to protect the brick-and-mortar stores that are paying taxes in town. Some of these are fruit vendors, you could have other food vendors that will compete with our restaurants and merchants in town that pay taxes. We don't want to eliminate them, but we want to show, want to make sure we protect them. So ensure what we're looking to do is this. Right now, the ordinance, next, we want to make sure where they park. We don't want them parking in residential areas or near Central Avenue School for obvious reasons there. We don't want a lot of foot traffic or car traffic around children. And then finally, right now, it's left to the Police Department to determine who gets the license. We want to include the zoning officer in that process as well. Make sure that where they open is within the zoning requirements of the borough. That's it. I mean, our goal is just to, A, protect the brick-and-mortar businesses, and B, to just get a better handle and manage the process.
Thank you. Very well presented. Questions or comments from the council? Jeanie?
Yeah. A comment is that the Police Department is agreeable with the proposal and they have no issue with whatever stated as far as enforcement is concerned.
That's good. Thank you. Yeah, Rob?
How many current vendor, we want to move it from five to three?
Per year, yes.
And how many do we have outstanding currently?
Right now, I think there's three in town.
So nobody's, no one who has a permit's going to lose one?
Correct. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Okay, again, we have this listed for introduction. Thank you. Award contract to Wolfington Body Company in the amount of $65,925 for the purchase of senior citizen minibus. This is resolution 233. Can't have questions from the audience, but there was a food truck at a cleaners...
Right, there's a food truck down by the Martinizing Cleaners.
Kevin's really...
Not Martinizing.
Yeah. That's what it is.
Martinizing, yeah.
It's Kevin's, yeah.
Then there's the hot dog vendor by JP Morgan Chase Bank, and then there's that other food vendor behind Esposito's Market. Those are the three.
Sam, sorry, can't, thank you. All right. The bus?
I believe Carmella. Correct. You want me to talk about?
Yep.
Well, we were very pleased, we received a couple of bids on the, on the contract for a new minivan, a new van for the senior center, okay? And Wolfington Body Incorporated came in with the lowest bid in the amount of $65,925. This van is probably going to be a lot better than the current one we have. And just so that everybody knows, we do have $31,000 from one particular grant and we have another $35,000 grant from Investor Savings. So we are not putting any money into this at all. So I'm very pleased that, that we were able to get this process very quickly. And Wolfington has promised us that maybe in about 90 days, the seniors are going to have a brand-new van that keeps on going. Our ridership is, has doubled within the past year and it'll probably continue to rise. So, you know, this, this will be on our resolution 233.
Questions or, Jeanie?
Yeah. Carmella, you just mentioned that there are two grants.
Yes.
One from Investor. Do you recall the amount?
Jacob Henry is the other, I'm sorry. Jacob Henry. Do you remember Perkins? $31,000?
The Perkins Fund was the other. $35,000 from Investor's Bank and $31,000 grant from the Jacob Henry Perkins Trust.
Okay. So if I may go to...
We have $66,000.
Right. If I make, so the numbers will add up because I'm going, I'm reading resolution 233. It's saying that the chief financial officer is saying that the fund is available in the amount of $65,925 in the Jacobs Fund.
Correct.
But we're not drawing that amount from...
Correct. I mean, basically, probably what will happen is we will need to advance the Investor Bank gift.
That's why the full amount is for that?
And that, and then the funds will be replenished back to the account. So the total disbursement, the final disbursement will be $31,000 from the Jacob Henry Perkins Trust, $35,000 from Investor's Bank. In order to be able to award a contract, we have to certify that the funds are in place. We don't have the actual receipt of the grant from the bank at the moment. We have a letter committing to it.
I'm okay with the process. However, earlier, is Robert still here? Well, because the earlier resolution said that the Perkins Fund only has $50,000? Is that the correct amount?
No. There's an actual, the corpus of the account is over $300,000. The investment income...
So there will be sufficient money for us to use?
We have 360-something thousand dollars in that account.
Yeah. I think the process was, we had talked about using the Perkins Funds for a matching grant and so we kind of left that at $50,000 for that step one, but now that we have the bid...
We want to make sure we have sufficient money to cover that.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Again, this will be under the consent agenda. Thank you. Open space funding request for Coal Park Fountain and Rain Gardens at MRC. Melissa Honeahan is here for open space.
Thank you. Thank you to Mayor and Council for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of the Open Space Committee. And congratulations on receiving that $325,000. I know that it was competitive and not everything was granted this year, so Madison should be very proud. I am the new chair, sort of new. I guess I can't say that for too much longer. But in November 2003, a referendum was unanimously supported by the council and passed overwhelmingly by Madison voters to establish the dedicated open space fund. And that has allowed the borough to qualify for significant dollars from external sources. And has also allowed the borough to build upon the value of our community substantially. In 2004, the council established the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Advisory Committee to advise the mayor and council on very specific things regarding land acquisition, the use of the open space fund, potential grant opportunities, and to make recommendations regarding the implementation of the open space plan itself. From 2004 to 2010, Madison made several successful land purchases and they were made much more impressive because the open space funds were leveraged to receive county funds, green acres dollars, and money from the Morris Land Conservancy in excess of $11 million. That making our open space dollars go much further than it could have done alone. Over time, the land acquisition focus of the advisory committee has begun to transition towards a stewardship phase, which is also the case in much of New Jersey. While acquisition and recommendations to the mayor and council will continue to be made when appropriate, it's likely that most of the recommendations will be regarding stewardship and the implementation of the open space plan as a... and the implementation of the open space plan as it is, as it exists from 2009. These recommendations support the spaces that the borough already owns to ensure that they are maintained and useful to all of us as, as members of Madison, and so that they remain consistent with the open space plan as it exists. Occasionally, as, as you're all familiar, there are requests from the open space fund to cover projects. These come seemingly randomly, and one of those projects recently came to the advisory committee for consideration, and that is to restore the Coal Park Fountain, which is in some disrepair. And it, it was something that we all discussed as the advisory committee, and it, it actually opened up a conversation that was much bigger than just a Coal Park Fountain. After I had talked to Paula Laco from a parks group, he mentioned that, you know, there are a few bids ranging from 7,000 to 17,000. And I asked if it was a historic, if it was registered as historic, because that's the way they were kind of presenting it. It is not, in fact, registered as historic spot, but it did come up. And I talked to the county about what funds may be available to leverage funds from open space. If we move forward, we can potentially have that space registered and be, have an opportunity to have 80% of the funds come from the county, and 20% of the funds come from open space. So our recommendation as an advisory council is to continue to leverage the funds that we have by implementing a process and some specific policies for how we consider the incoming requests. I think that the expertise on parks and historic preservation and any number of other volunteer councils and advisory groups will allow us to continue to be aware of what grants are available and to make sure that the open space dollars go further. So our recommendation as an advisory committee is to put in place something that is a little bit more formal as far as policies, so that we can consider things on the same playing field, and also make sure that we are aware of what other funds might be out there to support the work that, that we're all doing in Madison.
Questions from the council? Bob?
Just real quick, so what you're really proposing here, which I think is great, is you just want to formalize and codify a process, so when things like Coal Park come up, you can just evaluate them fairly and evenly, and then go after the money to do them.
Right.
That makes perfect sense to me.
And as councilors are aware, and I apologize, I guess the ordinance didn't follow this, but it is an advisory committee, so it, the council makes a final say as far as use of funds, but it's, one, come up with a good policy, so it's a good way to analyze it, and the other is, as we had some, a whole lot of things going on over the last couple of years, we've been kind of bypassing the committee and, you know, appropriately using funds. But now we want to just make sure we get the advice from the committee. So the step now for Coal Park would be to go ahead and work with the other committees about the possibility of historic, and this would be just on the park itself, so it doesn't affect any neighbors and residents.
Right, we're not gonna like establish an entire historic district, I don't think, but, yeah.
And from my understanding, James Park is also not in the historic district, or, and so we might want to look at both those parks at the same time, so we don't have to go through the process separately.
And, and just in, oh, sorry, in conversations with the county, and I've mentioned this to, to Mr. Burnett, that, you know, when I called kind of out of the blue, they were very supportive of the opportunity to fund things in Madison because of how well you have stewarded the money in the past. So they're quite happy to take our call and consider projects from, from our town.
Okay, so our next steps are working with the various committees, and then you'll be coming back with a suggested policy for reviewing and recommending requests for funding.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Excuse me, Bob?
Yep.
So then, the goal will be that all money that's appropriated from open space needs to be requested through this committee?
It, it would be the goal that they would have at least an advisory role, and as we get into these stewardship requests, and even whether it's land or historic preservation, the idea that, you know, maybe the committee and future members would say, all right, this one has a matching opportunity, so it gets more points in the scale. But as said, council, whether it's this council or future council, can appropriate money from the open space fund with or without advice and consent from the committee. So it'd be just a filter.
I think we should certainly try to get matching funds whenever we can.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Appropriation 25,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signal improvements.
These are flasher improvements. It was a request by the engineering department jointly with the electric utility. That's why the agenda record is co-signed by both department heads. It was approved or recommended for funding by the governing body as part of the 2012 capital budget for the electric utility. Funds are available, and it's needed improvement in terms of safety, and the police department concurs on the recommendation. And at the October meeting, if this is approved, this evening to introduce it, we would be awarding, proposing to award a contract to General Electric to continue their flasher work that they've done at Britton, Noe, and other troubled intersections around the borough.
This is ordinance 31, 2012, listed for introduction. Any, got, which signal or signals are these? Is it Fairview?
This would be Fairview would be one of them, and also, the engineer has a, there's a list in the, let's see.
I think Fairview is the last of the unimproved flashes we have left in town.
Right, yeah, we previously did Britton Greenwood, Noe Woodland, and the current project would be Fairview Greenwood Flasher.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Okay, would it be Fairview Greenwood or Fairview Central?
Fairview Central.
Wait, that's right, there's one and each, there's two, two left.
Is, we do have...
I'm just going by the agenda recommendation by the engineer.
So it's, it's Fairview slash Rosedale and Greenwood.
Yes. And one of Greenwood's updated a few years after the highway came through, but I know Fairview hasn't been touched in quite a number of years.
We'll verify, we're not awarding the contract tonight, so we'll verify the location, and we'll have the engineer at the, the next meeting.
So if we need to, that would be a minor change to ordinance if we needed to adjust. Okay. Ordinances for hearing.
Ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, September the 10th, while were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to members of the general public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 25, 2012, an ordinance establishing that a business entity which makes political contributions to municipal candidates and municipal and county political parties in excess of certain thresholds shall be limited in its ability to receive public contracts from the Borough of Madison and County of Morris, State of New Jersey.
I open the hearing. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25 dash 2012.
Second up?
Council discussion. Call, call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Who?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 25 dash 2012 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance to the law.
Ordinance 26, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $150,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for several small projects on the five-year capital plan.
I open the hearing. Is anyone in the audience wishing to comment on ordinance 26, 2012? Sam?
Sam Cerciolo, Park Avenue, Madison. I'm just curious about the, you know, where do you come up with 150, can you explain how these, how this $150,000 over, how does this number come in about? I mean, the way we just sort of jockeying money all over the place here, what is that all about, 150,000 for a five-year project or something? How did that $150,000 come into play? I mean, where do these numbers come from?
Mr. DiBiase, who runs the water department, brought a number of small projects throughout the community to the attention of the engineer. The engineer, as a professional, then prepared a construction estimate for each of the projects. And we took your advice, which was, why don't we consolidate multiple projects in one funding stream in one ordinance? That's what we're doing here, so thank you for the compliment. That is what we're proposing to do, is basically take the $150,000 and do multiple projects with one contractor throughout the town, which is what you've been advocating. So this is a nice test.
So my suggestion was, well, thank you.
We always listen to you.
Thank you. Well done. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move 25, 2012.
Second. Council discussion. Call, call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Who?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 26 dash 2012 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 28, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter 134 entitled Parky Lots.
I open the hearing for ordinance 28, 2012. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 28 dash 2012. I'll second.
Discussion.
So if this is passed, that means we're opening up the spots tomorrow, basically?
Well, we need... We, we just, we're working on restriping.
Oh, it's very nice to restriping.
And some signage, but yes, we, we will try to accommodate it in a very short timeframe.
Fair enough. Just trying to plan for tomorrow's.
There you go.
I'm usually one of the first ones.
Yeah, I'm usually one of the first ones.
As I say, you don't have to worry about the... Okay, any other discussion? Call, call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Who?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 28 dash 2012 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance to the law. This is now time for invitation for discussion, round two, and the three-minute rule still, and it's already three minutes. Three-minute rule is still in effect, but now you may comment on anything that is appropriate. With that in mind, then please step up to the lectern, name and address, and, as I said, three minutes. Lisa?
I'm just wearing my field hockey booster club president hat, because, Rob, you said something about the booster club user fees not going into the MAF.
What I, no, what I said was, the user fees that families pay for children participating in junior and high school sports are not remitted back to the MAF.
Okay, but every one of our high school booster clubs, field...
I'm not talking about booster, I'm not talking about booster clubs, I'm talking about the actual fee.
But that, we have, okay.
That, that...
And that's two, actually, two separate different things.
Absolutely.
Madison Junior School is a separate 501(c)(3).
Yes, absolutely.
And the high school is an, the $150 activity fee that goes directly into the general fund of the board.
Exactly, I'm, I have nothing, absolutely.
I know, I'm just saying because I know for a fact, we're putting, I mean, field hockey, I'm very proud of the fact that we're the only ones who have paid, who are paying for the third year.
Absolutely right.
And you will be getting that check shortly, the MAF will be getting that check.
Yes, absolutely, and as you know, Brenda, my wife, is running the field hockey...
The junior program.
The junior program, so very familiar with the fact that they've paid for three years in a row, but this had only to do, I was just trying to explain the source of the approximately $60,000 that the MAF collects in fees, because, believe it or not, standing at the field, a lot of times, people are talking about, oh, you know, where did all the fees go and things like that. So just...
But it does, that comes from...
Simply clarifying where the money comes from.
But it does come from the booster clubs, too.
Of course, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Tom?
Yes, Tom Brunner, 20 Reven Drive. I understand you're planning to have a meeting on election day?
No.
No, we have moved our, to the day after the election.
Or day before.
Day before.
Day before, Monday.
That's right, day before.
Okay, and this one...
I'm getting the dates all mixed up.
So that's on Monday, November?
November 5th.
5th.
A week earlier than normal, because the 12th is a holiday for Veterans Day, and then we couldn't move to the Wednesday because the League of Municipalities Conference, so we moved a week earlier.
Okay, and so there's no hardship on the borough clerk's office?
It's a huge hardship.
It's always a hard...
Everyone here, when we moved the meeting, everyone swore that they will keep their comments short and sweet for that meeting, so the borough clerk can get a good night's rest in anticipation of election day.
No, I know Mrs. Catalonello asked the question last time for the very hardship and...
And we said that we're gonna keep the agenda short, right?
Yep, we, yep.
All right.
But thank you for reminding us, and I will make sure our clerk reminds us, too, hits me upside the head if necessary. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Cerciolo, Park Avenue, Madison. Just some information on, you know, a lot of people, I see a lot of people during the week and all that, and a lot of people like watching these meetings on, on that cable 21 there. And who, who makes sure that these meetings get on, on the, on the cable? Is it, is it the school, or is it us?
It's a teammate, so Robert takes his recordings back, prepares them, and they are put on at the high school, so it is a...
All I'm gonna say that, Mayor, as Mayor, you should call up the school and tell them, hey, let's start putting these meetings on, because there hasn't been meeting on in quite a while.
All right, that is...
And there's a lot of people like watching these meetings.
Yep, thank you, we will check into that, because I was wondering what happened, our ratings.
Yeah, and also, a couple of meetings ago, I, I asked about suits. I understand there's some suits going on in town. How many suits on the table? Can somebody answer that? I understand that the Board of Health, the extra director, he's suing, some other suits. Do we have, can you tell me how many suits are, you know, what's going on in Madison?
Right now, I can't give you a definitive number. I know of two lawsuits, one of them, at this juncture, the town has been dismissed. The Board of Health is a separate entity, as you know. I'm not gonna comment on active litigation, but there is litigation involving the Board of Health that goes back several years.
Well, you said there was two, what's the other one?
There was a suit against the borough dealing with the downtown district, and last Friday, we got the vast majority of the suit thrown out.
What, what do you mean, last, the district? What, can you...
Last Friday, we had a motion before the judge, and the judge told the plaintiff that, I think the judge's comments were, I don't know where you're going with this suit, and threw most of the suit out. There'll be limited discovery, and we're confident that we'll get the remainder of it dismissed.
What, what was the suit about?
Downtown Development District.
What does that mean, downtown development district?
Mr. Cerciolo, if you'd like, the suit's filed, it's a public record, you can go to Morris County Courthouse and review it, if you'd like. I'm not gonna get up here and just bait what it's about.
I'm not debating, I'm asking the question.
An individual has filed a filed suit against the Borough of Madison, the Downtown Development District. They were dismissed, and a volunteer, the suit was dismissed last Friday in Superior Court by the judge. One remaining count will remain, and the judge told the plaintiff's counsel, I think his exact words, I don't know where you're going with this suit.
I'm not going anywhere.
No, no, that's what the judge...
But I just asked the question, could you...
So is, just a slight correction, Downtown Development Commission?
Downtown Development Commission, I'm sorry.
But, everything except for...
The Downtown Development Commission is being sued, is that what you're saying?
But it's been, it's been thrown out.
It was, it's been thrown out, it's been thrown out.
What was this, what were they suing about?
Mr. Cerciolo, again, I'm not gonna get into debate, they're suing, they were alleging that they were, somebody was wrongly precluded from operating as a vendor down there, and the judge did not find merit with a vast majority of their suit.
Another thing, on the, on the Board of Health, does it, does it pay to keep this Board of Health? I understand there was, there's five towns, now we're down to two towns. I like to know, maybe it doesn't pay to have, maybe we ought to do like these other towns, go, go buy, go borrow health. I mean, can I get next meeting some numbers of what it costs us actually to run the Board of Health?
Actually, on the, the website, there is a very good PowerPoint presentation that was presented during the budgeting process, that will give you a very good background...
as far as fees coming in from the other towns, what the average cost per resident in Madison versus the other towns, and as Ms. Vitale pointed out, you know, we are, as, as anytime as a provider of services, whether it's health services or building walls, you're always, you know, your contracts come up and you need to make sure you work with them.
But is it true that, is it true that we lost three towns out of the five?
That we have not received official notice on any of those. We have, as was pointed, report that two of the five have reaffirmed that they are on board.
All right, and my last thing is, I'm really appreciate that you took my suggestions on the, on the water thing, and I'd love you to take a suggestion on the, on the pump stations, will save a lot of money in town.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing, wishing to be heard, comment?
I have a question on the chapter one thirty-nine, the peddling and soliciting. The vendor that is behind Esposito's market, I think the council said it was, he's doing it on private property? Who, who owns that property behind there?
Esposito's, that's his building.
So he might be, is he doing it on private property without Esposito's permission?
No, he has Esposito's permission, and what we're looking to do is make sure that we regulate that, because there are other vacant buildings in town, for instance, the vacuum store across from Staples, somebody could open up shop there, we want to have some control over that.
So if the vendor, he's only there on Wednesdays as far as I understand.
Mm-hmm.
So if he wants to continue to stay there, then he'd have to get a license from the Borough?
He has a license now.
He has a license.
Yes.
So the ordinance really wouldn't, doesn't affect him that much unless he doesn't get the license.
Correct, what we're looking to do is manage the process going forward.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, because I knew that he was there every Wednesday for quite, quite a while, so, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wish, wishing to be heard? Excuse me? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction of ordinances.
Oops. Okay, ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Wednesday, October the tenth, all will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and copies will be available to members of the public.
I ask the, please, I call up the ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read the said ordinances by title.
Ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one thirty-nine of the Borough Code entitled Peddling and Soliciting to include approval of zoning permit and other amendments.
I move.
I second.
Discussion? Yes, chief?
Bob, just clarify for me, what's going to happen to the three vendors that we currently have? Is there anything that they would need to do once this is passed?
No.
Okay.
No, when their license comes up for renewal, the fee will be greater, but that's about it.
That's my next question, so, so what happens at the point that I assume at the beginning of the year, or they all stagger a different time where their permit gets expired?
I believe it's the beginning of the year.
So it's always, so everyone's permit will be up for renewal at the same time?
Yep.
Now, what would be the process if, if we receive, for example, five applications and we only allow three?
First come, first served.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other? Full call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty dash two thousand twelve.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating forty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for improvement upgrades to police department mobile vision system.
Move ordinance thirty dash two thousand twelve, a second.
Discussion? Seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
All right, I lost track here, we're on to ordinance thirty-one dash two thousand twelve.
Okay, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signal improvements.
I move.
I second.
And just of a clarification, we talked about the fact that we had to modify it based on location, the ordinance is not specific, so it would cover either location, so we're okay with that.
It says various locations.
We're okay. Any other discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda resolution.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions are two twenty-nine dash two thousand twelve through our two thirty-seven dash two thousand twelve, and we will move two thirty-eight separately.
Yep. I have a second.
I second.
Discussion?
Yeah. For resolution two thirty-three, I would recommend that we specify that we, that the fund will be reimbursed once we receive that matching grant. Would that be appropriate, Matt?
Yeah, that's appropriate. It's noted on the record, has no problem whatsoever, will be reimbursed by.
Always going to go to Tahiti.
In performance with the letter received from the Better Savings.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to call attention to resolution two thirty, which is the granting of New Jersey affiliate of Susan G. Coleman for the Cure Permission to Publicize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
As well as two different, they have two different organizations.
And, yes, and we have the Taiwan On Campaign Permission to Publicize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we often have brought the people up front to emphasize that, but.
About this year.
All right, full call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
I vote yes to all, except our two thirty-four dash two thousand twelve, on which I vote no.
Okay, Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mayor, I move resolution two thirty-eight dash two thousand twelve, which need to be read into record.
Just so the councils are aware, we, we posted this in the hallway, two thirty-eight dash two thousand twelve, it's a resolution of the Borough of Madison accepting the formal retirement notice of Acting Police Chief Gerald Mantone to be effective October fifth, two thousand twelve, whereas Acting Police Chief Gerald Mantone, by letter dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, formally notified the Borough of his intention to retire from the Madison Police Department effective October fifth, two thousand and twelve, after thirty-four years of service, with his terminal leave to commence on October fifth, two thousand twelve, and end on August third, two thousand thirteen. Now therefore be resolved that the Borough hereby accepts Acting Chief Mantone's retirement notice with regret and acknowledges the designation of Lieutenant Darren Dashison by Acting Chief Mantone to serve as the officer in charge in the absence of Acting Chief Mantone. Be further resolved that the permanent, permanent appointment of a police chief will be determined through a formal process to be adopted hereafter by ordinance.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Full call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Approval of vouchers?
Okay, public safety, fifteen thousand two hundred and two dollars, nine cents, health and public assistance, nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars, eighty cents, public works and engineering, one hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and one cent, community affairs, ten thousand two hundred and fifty-four